Good evening, everybody. Appreciate you all joining us for our May Planning Commission meeting. If you don't think Springdale's growing, look around. I mean, there's a number of people and the amount that's on the agenda. It's gonna be... We'll go as fast as we can on here, but this is good indication as far as growth for Springdale, so we appreciate that. But before we get started, I'm gonna stand and lead you all in the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Tyler's gonna lead us in vacation.
Pledge of Allegiance?
To the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's prayer. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the wonderful day you've given us, the opportunity to come and serve our city, the wonderful city you let us reside in. Ask you to please stay...bless our...ask you to please guide us in our decisions tonight that it will be for the best of the city. And thank you for the country we live in, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Well, thank you guys again for joining us for our May 1st, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, and I'll call this meeting to order. Can we do a roll call?
Gary Compton?
Here.
Roy Covert?
Here.
Vee Vee Haney?
Here.
Shannon Mueller?
Here.
Peyton Parker?
Kevin Parsley?
Here.
Aaron Panado?
Brian Powell?
Here.
Dale Tyler?
Here.
And any questions for the minutes from April?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Mrs. Haney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Covert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. First section on here is table items, W-18-08 Manuel Navas, 6957 East Donham Road, waiver of sidewalk requirements presented by Manuel. Okay, come back to that one.
Manuel's here, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, he didn't know he was supposed to stand up, sorry.
There we go, all right.
Okay, so do I'm ready to talk or...
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm here. My name is Manuel Ewanava, and I'm here to...I'm trying to get a...the waiver of sidewalk for my property, which is A-131, Donham, D-O-W-N-U-M, Springdale. And the reason I'm trying to get the...waiver of sidewalk, that's because nobody next to me have sidewalk. So I don't know if I can get it or...
Okay. Patsy, staff comments?
Well, I don't normally recommend a waiver of a sidewalk, but this is a very narrow piece that he has frontage on, on Donham Road. I don't know that it would serve any purpose for him to put that small piece in at this time.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote?
This is a recommendation.
Excuse me, recommendation.
Second.
Recommendation from Mr. Covert, second by Mrs. Haney.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Waiver passes 7-0?
Staff will prepare the resolution. It goes to council on the...somebody tell me the date. I forgot to look it up.
It's 15th of June.
The 16th.
15th.
Oh, yeah, the 15th.
No, it goes to the second council member.
Okay, I gotta add some more, the 29th, which is, isn't that the holiday?
It'll go to council on the 29th of...29th of May.
29th of May, so do I'm not...I'm not gonna be able to get the certificate of occupancy to get that?
Not until...not until after the planning commi...or the council approves the waiver. How close are you to getting your C of O?
Well, I was gonna request an inspection for Monday. The house is almost complete.
Almost complete?
Yeah, I got light and gas and everything ready.
Okay, but you haven't had it inspected yet.
No.
After you have your inspection, let them call the office and see if we can move it up to next Tuesday and see if we can get it then, if you pass your inspection, okay?
Okay.
We'll move it up to council meeting. I'm sure the mayor let that happen, and we'll move it up to that if you pass the inspection and are ready to get the C of O, and that's the only thing you need.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and...I'm gonna go ahead and call for inspection on Monday. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's on the 20...it would be on the 22nd because there's five Tuesdays this month.
I didn't look, I just looked at the last one.
I didn't either.
The next item on the agenda are 18-14 Timothy and Laurel Hines, west of Ivy Lane, west side of north of Crossover Road from A-1 to C-2 presented by Bates &amp; Associates.
I'm Jason from Bates &amp; Associates, just requesting... We're requesting a rezon from A-1 to C-2 on this property for the purposes of construction... constructing a veterinary clinic.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates regional commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval, but will need city-of-favor concurrence to rezon, improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations, and encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Rezoning passes 7-0?
Staff will prepare the ordinance, and it goes to council on the 22nd, and we will send a notification to the city of Faval for their concurrence.
You will do that, okay.
Next section, public hearing on conditional use, C-18-12 Christopher and Naomi Harp, 7948 West Gibbs Road, tandem lot split presented by Phil Daniel.
Good evening, council.
Do you have any comments on this or anything?
All I'm doing is splitting the lot off for my daughter so she can build a house.
Okay. Staff comments?
I don't think we have any comments with that. Are you paving the driveway or is the driveway paved all the way back to that?
Not at this time, Patsy.
Okay, you'll have to come back and ask for a waiver because we can't.
I think it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda with the rezoning, because there is a rezoning to rezon this property to RE as well, so we may want to do that at the same time.
Okay.
If the tandem lot is not approved, you don't want to rezon it, correct? Or do you want to rezon it and then see about the tandem lot, because they all go together?
Which one is it?
Would you mind asking that question?
It's our 18-19. You're asking to rezon this one acre tract from A-1 to RE, and the rest of it would remain A-1 property?
That is...
And the reason you want to do that is to split off this one acre lot for your daughter?
That's correct.
And you're asking for a waiver of having to pave the driveway?
That's correct.
So there's all three things that need to go together.
Second page, third one down.
Our 18-19 is the rezon.
Okay.
It's Philip Daniel for the rezon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Didn't see the third one.
The waiver request is...
Adjustment, deletion of pave easement?
18-17 to waive the paving requirements.
Okay, we'll start with the tandem lot split first on it. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Tandem lot split passes 7-0, and then...
Is that a request?
Sorry, I got mixed up on here. Rezoning, R-18-19 Philip Daniel, 7948 West Gibbs Road from A-1 to RE presented by Philip Daniel. So staff comments on this one?
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential developments should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility, availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors, and assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size.
And then any comments on the board of adjustment, 18-17, variance for deletion of pave easement?
You're asking for it to totally be waived, not asked for time to pave it in a couple of years.
That's correct.
Any staff comments on...
It's a long driveway to provide access to this...to this structure, though.
I currently have my house on it, and I think I asked for the...
Can you speak into the mic, please?
I currently live on the property, and I asked for the waiver when I built my place, and the council also waived that at that time as well.
Okay, but now you're extending further to another lot, right?
No, the lot's actually closer to the road.
So you're just splitting it?
That's right.
And it's a variance for that pavement?
Right, it's a variance.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, it's a variance, yes. Okay, let's do the rezoning first.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience on the rezoning and then the waiver for the paving requirement? To the commission for the rezoning?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Powell?
Oh, excuse me, Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Rezoning passes 7-0, and then...
That's a variance for the...
Branch for the deletion of the paved easement. To the commission?
This is a call for the vote, too.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Powell?
Okay, Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Variance passes 7-0?
Okay, the rezoning and the conditional use, staff will prepare the ordinance and the resolution, and it'll go to council on the 22nd.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, back to the conditional use. Next one, C-18-13 Russell Merrill, where Shave the Planet, 2940 West Sunset, Use Unit 44, mobile vending in a C-2 presented by Russell Merrill.
Russell Merrill with Shave the Planet, just requesting conditional use so we can continue operating our seasonal snow cone sales at the parking lot in front of Malko Theaters on Sunset.
Staff comments?
Again, we're hearing this request because of change in ownership. There is a little bit of difference at this location than there was when we looked at it the last time. The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable. The off-street parking was a question, and the Seven Brew that is on the agenda coming up later is also on this lot, so we have spent some time with the property manager and looking at what can be done with this site because of the additional parking that's required. So they went through and counted the number of parking spaces that are available. They have 227 parking spaces in this area. The different uses that are allocated, including the movie theater, there's a couple of offices, there's a salon in there, there's a smoke shop, and a karate place, maybe it's not karate, it's one of those kind of places anyway. They use up 201 spaces of that, which allows them to have 26 spaces left over. The additional yellow square you see on that is for a 30-day period, they put a tent on there to sell fireworks. And so for that 30-day period, when that tent is in place, they will not have enough parking, because that will take out that many spaces, 26 spaces. So for that 30-day period, there is a question whether there would be enough parking at this site. And that usually would be a problem, but there is additional parking in this area across the driveway where Kmart is and all of that, except that property is currently being leased still to Kmart, so they can't re-lease it, so part of that can be used. But until we have something coming back into that location, I don't know that we really have a problem. It's kind of complicated. We've been spending the last couple of days going back and forth over all this, and I did not find in...and... As you may know, is there a required number of parking spaces for a fireworks stand? I couldn't find it. I don't know if there's anything in there that requires a certain number.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Do they just have to maintain 20 feet from all their guy ropes for parking internal combustion engines?
Yeah, and I think if you...you see where they're locating it, for the most part, the drive aisle on the west side would be available, which is 24 feet. On the east side, those parking spaces may be a little bit closer than the required 20 feet. We didn't measure that because I wasn't sure exactly how that happened. So that's the situation with this. It's putting a lot on one site, and I talked to one of the property managers and asked the question if there was a choice between the two. If the commission feels like there's a real issue with all of that going on one site, which way do they want to go? And I don't know. We need to have a little discussion before we ask which one they want to go with, so... It's a 30-day period while that fire...fireworks stand is there. Kind of a unique situation, so...
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So with that, I mean, there is other parking. It may be some question as far as safety, I think. However, with the conditional use, we could turn around and revoke it down the road, and it may not be in time for this go-around, but it'd just be that 30-day period.
Right.
We could see what happens, and if it's not working, then next year, one of them's got to go, and...
Yeah, and it could be, and we had the discussion about moving the shaved ice place across the driveway if they needed to. They just can't re-lease that property right now to go to that location, plus the expense. And I think it's not a problem to try it and see how it works.
Yeah, I think I would lean towards that, just because I've...I mean, I've seen even when there fireworks are there, and of course, we haven't had that new construction, so that's...
Well, and the movie theater has had some remodeling, and it...
A little more crowded.
It has less space or less number of seats, but it's probably doing better than it's done in a long time, because it has been upgraded and it runs first-run movies. So we're seeing more people use the movie theater, too, which is a good thing for all of us, but it's a little bit...
Where would you be located, exactly?
Where that little green square is on the bottom.
Okay, okay.
Where it has been in the past. They're putting it in the same location that it was before, yeah.
During the 30-day period, you're still gonna be right there.
Yeah. Because that's where the power's set up so that it can operate from that location as it has in the past, so...
Prior to my ownership, was there ever any issues?
Okay, he's got it.
Do we know were there issues in the past with...
Well, in the past, I don't know that there was issues between the fireworks stand and the shaved ice, but there was all that other parking to the other side. And now that we're taking that out with another facility going in there, that's the concern that we have.
You know, yeah.
Do you know, do you have any concerns that you wanted to address with all this going on the same site?
We've never had any issues with parking due to lack of parking spaces. It's people just being convenient and parking too close because they don't want to walk. It has nothing to do with there's not enough spots.
So is your power supply on generator, or is there a pole out there that you meter?
There's a pole.
Okay. Could you...if it had to be moved, could you use a generator?
I could. I'd prefer not to. I would prefer to pay to have another pole set up so that I could attach someplace else if that was the options.
And if that happens and it needs to move, you'll have to come back and ask for a new conditional use, because you can't move it to the other side of the parking lot either. So if it is approved tonight with this situation that we know, it is a conditional use, and if there...as Mrs. Haney said, if there's a problem, we can bring it back and discuss it at the time and look at a newer location for it.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Initial use passes 7-0?
Staff will prepare the resolution, it goes to council on the 22nd.
Thank you.
I hope we're in a situation that we're filling up all that parking lot for all of that during that timeframe on there, so...
Next section, rezoning, R-18-17 Julio Roca, 721 Turner from C-1 to C-2 presented by Julio Roca.
I'm requesting to be rezoned from a C to a C-1 to C-2 for business purposes.
Okay. Staff comments?
The comprehensive land use plan indicates neighborhood commercial for the...for that area. The current zoning meets that requirement. The rezoning request is not in keeping with the comprehensive land use plan and is not recommended for approval.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
It is C-1, which fits into that area, and we want it to C-2.
Do you want to know the difference in the two?
I think we've talked about trying not to, especially with the housing residential in the area not going up to that higher level of commercial.
Yes, I thought that's what you're looking for, sorry.
I'm getting there. In a C-1 zone, and it is currently zoned, is called a neighborhood commercial district. It's designed to accommodate limited retail developments within or adjacent to neighborhood areas for the purpose of supplying daily household needs of the residents for food, drugs, and personal services. The permitted uses are citywide public uses by right, cultural, recreational, and health facilities, office studios and related services, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, parking lot, and healthcare clinic. A C-2 zone, as he is requesting, is a commercial district established to...in order to be a broader range of retail, which comprises the commercial function of the city, including groupings of freestanding commercial structures. The type of uses permitted are citywide public uses by right, cultural, recreational, and health facilities, offices, studios, and related services, eating places, neighborhood shopping goods, other shopping goods, trades and services, automotive services, parking lot, temporary buildings, transportation services, healthcare clinic, and an indoor flea market. So that's the difference between the two zoning classifications.
And we've talked about C-2 a lot as far as that it's so broad in that whole piece.
It is broad.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
I think, too, that area can get pretty congested just with the neighborhood traffic to add to that higher level of commercial.
What's the future of that crossing the tracks right there?
Well, it's been discussed several times about whether it needs to be relocated to another location. I don't know that there's...I mean, I think the railroad would like to see it moved. We don't have any plans to make any changes to it right now.
Because we talked about this in the downtown master plan on it, okay.
And this is just at what I would call the edge of the downtown area. We haven't really addressed that, but I think we need to...one of the next things that we need to take on, not that we don't have plenty to do, but we need to look at that edge development around the downtown area and how we want to see that develop to support what's going on with the Form-based Code, too, so...
Okay.
Where's the nearest C-2 to that site?
Probably on Sunset, when you come all the way down to...
203 is probably a C-2.
203 is an automotive...
Because they sell tires and rims and things like that. They're on the corner of Turner and Cottle.
Yeah, and it's been there forever.
Yeah.
Right. And then when you go on the north side of Cottle, you're in the Form-based Code area, and we don't have C-2 zoning in that area. Coming south, you're not going to see any until you get to Sunset, and then there's the industrial area where the freezing place is, and then there's commercial on the north side of Sunset along through there.
Call for the vote?
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Powell?
No.
This does not pass 7-0.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision. You have to file a notice with the city clerk within 15 days indicating why you think that the planning commission's decision is an error, and then you'll have to notify the adjacent property owners before it can be placed on the city council agenda.
Who do I have to go to talk to?
You have to file a written appeal to the city clerk's office.
Okay.
Within 15 days from today.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, R-18-18 Gary and Wendy Steeth, west side of North Thompson, approximately 0.67 miles north of Randall Wabi, from C-2 to MF-12 presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with Engineering Services. We're requesting this property be rezoned from C-2 to MF-12. This is just north of County Line Storage on North Thompson, and I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for this area. However, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Ensure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. Stabilize property values and maintain the integrity of neighborhoods by providing residential neighborhoods from non-residential influences and providing buffers between residential and non-residential uses, and encourage the development of a variety of housing types appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale.
Any questions or comments from the audience? If you can come to the mic and state your name and address, please.
Hello, guys. My name is Robert Garza. I actually live on 1165 West Morris, which is north of the property there. We've been noticing a lot of breaking ends, high speed, particularly because there is a single-lane road that runs east and west in front of my property. Putting in such a development like that is just going to ruin the property value of my house, along with my neighbors, and there is a lot of houses behind that that are within $250,000 to $500,000 houses. I don't know how you guys feel, but I think we should keep Springdale clean.
Thank you.
I live at 1245 West Morris, and Robert's family...
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, Bridget Schmidt.
Okay.
And Robert's got a...family has a piece of property between the buffers between the end of my lot and the tree line back there. There's a lot of nature back there, and yes, we've had crimes, right down to my home was broken into a little over a month ago, and my husband and I were actually sleeping in our home at 2:30 in the morning when our house was broken into, along with seven other homes in the area. It's kind of scary that we have this. I don't think they've...just so you know, my background is 27 years in real estate in Minnesota, and I've done many multifamily developments. I don't think for an approval process as of yet that we have seen a clear outline of what their plan really is. I mean, I don't know what MF-12 means here, but I'm guessing that means 12 potential buildings of some number of units in it. No classification as to what kind of housing that's going to be, what kind of rental rates are going to be in there, is it going to be low-income, is it higher-end housing, are are they gonna purchase them, or is it only rental that's going in there in a residential area that we all live in? Right now, on the lot, um, if, if you look at the corner of where the development is at the end of my, at the end of Robert and I's street, there is a house sitting there right now that's vacant, it's not in the greatest condition, and they're trying to sell five more lots to the back of that. There is a pond back there, there's a water base, and so there's wetland back there, there's wetland on part of Robert's property that floods, and we're looking at a piece of property next door to us that's a half a million dollars, it's been vacant, from what I understand, almost two years. And I was in that property to evaluate it, um, potentially to buy it and rehab it last year, and it really was non-livable. I, every window was broken out of it, the plumbing was all pulled off the walls and in the sink, and some gentleman and his three, four kids was trying to live in it and rehab it. But what we don't need is any more disasters happening in the neighborhood of high-end homes. Um, Robert and his family's homes are probably four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollar houses, based on his brother-in-law trying to sell his, and rental property just doesn't help values in the neighborhood.
Pat, do you want to address as far as what, the MF twelve?
An MF twelve zone allows for multifamily construction at the maximum of twelve units per acre. It allows fourplexes, triplexes, duplexes, and fourplexes at, and, and not to exceed twelve units per acre. In order to get the twelve units per acre, they would have to start with eight, and our multifamily design standards say they have to do additional incentives in order to get to that twelve units per acre in either amenities that are adding it to it, um, additional open space, or the type of material that they be, that they, uh, use on the structures themselves. So that's how they get to twelve units per acre.
So right now, they couldn't put twelve units because it's not even an acre?
Well, right now, it is zoned, uh, A one, and they can only put one unit for every two hundred, has to have two hundred foot of frontage and two acres to put single-family homes on it. It is seven point two six acres is the size of that tract that they're trying to rezon.
So, so is this basically a lot that's being used as a commercial right now, or, cause I see that there's, there's business being created out of there.
I'm not really sure what's on that site now. I don't know if it's been there a long time and it's a non-conforming use or anything. I don't think we have anything that's shown what's going on there, uh, but they're asking for it to be rezoned for multifamily housing.
Well, we hope that, uh, of course, like everybody else that's here to, to avoid something like this, that we can keep it from, you know, uh, ruining our property value. That's, that's my main concern in bringing in low-income people and, and more violence and break-ins.
Thank you all. Any ques, other questions or comments from the audience? Jason, did you have something, or?
Um, no, the, the only thing that I wanted to add was the, the, the property north, according to the zoning map in the city of Springdale, that is MF twelve from our property north to Morris.
It is already zoned.
It's already zoned, MF twelve, so.
You're right.
Okay.
That's all I can say.
Let's see, the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
No.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
No.
Tyler?
Yes.
Uh, rezoning passes five two.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-second.
Let's see, let's, uh, next item, R eighteen dash twenty, Trailblazers Association Incorporated, southeast corner of Old Wire Road and Dodd Avenue, uh, from MF four SF two to O one, and, and O one to P, P one, uh, presented by CEI Engineering. Sorry, it's been a long day.
Nick Deegan with CEI Engineering, representing Trailblazers for this proposed rezoning.
Staff comments?
What we're doing is consolidating several pieces of property into a area that has the potential to be developed as a trailhead for the mountain bike park, and it has historic structures on it that can be made available to the city sometime in the future. So we're putting it all in a P one zone, which is an institutional district rather than what it's in, in now. Uh, the comprehensive land use plan, since I get to the right page. Indicates medium density residential use, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Acquisition of desired sites will in advance of need, community facilities should be centrally located in easily accessible areas within the city, adjacent to major streets to accommodate traffic well buffered from nearby residential areas, and inadequate sized parcels to accommodate future expansions.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Let's see, the commission?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Rezoning passes seven zero.
The runoff will definitely affect the Camelot subdivision. And I ask if you do consider this rezoning, which I am against because it's just, it's just not compatible to the neighbors. These folks have invested lots of money, purposefully bought a one acre lot to build a nice home on, and they just simply don't want these smaller homes next to them like this. So, consider in your, in your evaluation of this, if you do decide to rezonate down the road, if it does get worked out, that we get proper retention ponds that will coincide with the situation downstream and not affect the people who are down in the subdivision. Now, this is an already vulnerable subdivision, I should say, because of all the, the building that's going on out there. This is my first rodeo when it comes to two cities joining each other and approving this sort of subdivision or rezoning. And I'm not sure if it's going to apply in this case, but I suspect that our city council would have to also approve it. That, that still has to be determined, but I suspect that our city council would have to approve it also. So, just keep those things in mind. It's a expensive neighborhood. People have got a lifetime of investment in these homes, and they wouldn't have built a home on one acre if they were faced with this situation. So, I appreciate you allowing me to make my comments. I believe there are probably others here tonight that wish to speak also. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I ask you a question? What's the smallest lot size that you allow in Elm Springs?
We, we currently have one half acre lots.
Half acre lots.
Now, with that said, we do have in our codes the availability of a quarter acre lots, but we do not have any quarter acre lots in the city of Elm Springs at this point.
Thank you.
And to answer his question, an SF2 zoning allows four units per acre.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Tom Langton. My wife Karen and I live at 911 King Arthur Drive. We are just north, on the northern border of the subject property. I just want to say that I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to development, but I am opposed to it in the, in the requested manner in which it's, this rezoning is being requested. As the mayor said, you know, the adjacent properties are all, all one acre lots plus on the south side as well. With the, the traffic that's going to be generated by the additional homes that would be built there, I don't think that Ball Road and County Line Road, especially County Line Road seems to be in kind of poor repair. And the additional traffic would just, seems, seems to me it would make it worse. And, and that, of course, with the, the park being developed across the way would exacerbate the situation. Additionally, the, as the, the mayor spoke, the, the current flooding issues that we've, a lot of us in the neighborhood have experienced, I think that that should be addressed before we, well, before somebody would be allowed to build additional units and perhaps make it, it worse. I, I would think that some, something developed in a much more constant manner would be something that goes along with the Camelot subdivision, something that's like one acre parcels, and would not be at all opposed to that. And so, certainly, you know, the developer is there to, to make money, and I think that's fair. But, you know, I think that our goal should be to improve the area, maintain the, the charm and the quality of life that exists in that part of Elm Springs, Springdale today. And I don't think that two, tho- those two goals should be incompatible. So, I, with that, would ask that the planning commission decline or deny the proposal to rezone to SF2.
Thank you.
Let me do clarify that the drainage issues, the layout of the, of the subdivision, all of that is handled through the subdivision process, not the zoning question. The zoning question is only whether or not the highest and best use of this piece of property is single family residence at four units per acre. All of the other issues of drainage and traffic and all that kind of stuff is addressed with preliminary plat, not the zoning issue, okay?
Yes, sir.
My name is Dan Claremont. I also live in Camelot. I live on the northwest corner. And I heard what you just said, and I can tell you don't want us to all go through the same thing, but I would like to concur with the previous two folks who were up here discussing this. I don't think, I understand it's just being rezoned, but it's be, being rezoned with the intent to develop. And I, I think that there needs to be a comprehensive look at the infrastructure, including the drainage, and the, and the traffic along Ball Road and County Line Road. It's already very, very, it's pretty, it's pretty narrow, it's hazardous, and you're going to essentially double the population in that area. So, I, I believe before we approve, before you would approve a rezoning, I would like to ask that you consider a more comprehensive look at the entire area and look at it all at the same time. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Pam Fisher, and this is my stepmom Bernadette Wright. We live at 1107 Excalibur Drive, which is on the west side of this property. We back up to this property off of the cul-de-sac. I would second everything that my neighbors have said. There is a drainage problem in this area to the point that we had about eighteen inches of water in our downstairs living space a year ago. And would ask that this commission consider at least doing a flood assessment and doing everything possible to make sure that we're not going to be in that situation again with all the water drainage from another subdivision. I would also ask that we consider making, if it's going to be a subdivision, let's make it where they have to have lots that are comparable to the size of the lots that we purchased. Because when we invested, we planned to be there for the rest of our life, and we don't want to lose our property value.
And one of the reasons why we bought that lot that we are in is because as you look out on the deck or the back of the house, you've seen all these cows, and you've seen the deer running through there, and a lot of wildlife. Now, it's, you know, if they put houses in there, there's going to be seventy percent more water dumping down on us because that land will not be soaking up all that rainwater. So...
We respectfully request that you deny this request.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm so short, I probably am going to have to move this down a little bit.
That's fine, you can move it down a little bit.
Let's hope it doesn't howl at you. My name is Kay Bower, and I'm here with my husband Ken. We live at 992 Elm Springs Road. Our pasture backs up to the property line that you are looking at to rezone. We have five acres, and along the line of homes on that north side of Elm Springs Road are about the same measurements in five plus acres. Our neighbor has more than that, twenty acres. We have deer, we have, it's, it's zoned agriculture. The first three hundred feet are residential zoning, and then the, the rest of the property is ag. And we do have some animals. And our, our concern is to agree with Camelot and their drainage problems. It's not going to get any better. It's going to get worse. The traffic coming Elm Springs Road seems to be the speed, the speed lane from I-49 through to 112. And the traffic will increase significantly in putting a subdivision in. Our concern also is like theirs, that we live in Elm Springs because it's a rural atmosphere. And I don't know if your, your SF2, it's four units per acre, but those four units can, can they put in duplexes? So, it has to be single family residence. And so, you're talking, you know, quarter acre. I would respectfully ask that you consider seriously the rezoning, and like the other lady said, look at the area that, that you're, you're going to talk about and consider. And we request that this be denied by your planning commission. Thank you very much for your time.
One comment that I would have is that whenever there's annex areas into the city, they automatically default to an A1 in, in that whole piece. And so, that's why a lot of those are A1 as far as their current status in there, so.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify a statement that was made by the mayor earlier. The position of the city attorney's office, this does not require approval from Elm Springs because it is single family abutting to single family homes, and therefore, it's the position of our office that it's not an incompatible different use next to the Elm Springs property.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner Kendra Jones. And I live at the property just to the north of Camelot at 14201. I have ten acres there, and I recently moved to the area from Little Rock. So, I come from neighborhoods with quarter acre and very small lots. Part of what drew my family to this area was the fact that we don't have small lots. We don't have a lot of small quarter acres with high density, as you call it in your statute, it's medium density living. This area, if you turn it into a medium density, you put four homes per acre, and they can take up forty percent of each of those quarter acres, you are drastically reducing the amount of permeable surface that can withstand the water runoff that is already an issue. So, Madam Commissioner, I know that water runoff and flooding and those issues are not something for the zoning commission to really consider, but I think that as a part of this, you have to, if it's going to cover forty percent of that land, then it's going to have that much less permeability. You're going to cause the flooding to be that much worse. Two of the worst spots of flooding are right around that area. There's a lot of runoff issues. That is a major tributary area for stormwater. Also, the road conditions will not support having another twenty homes in the area or more. I mean, you're looking at a large subdivision if you put four homes per acre. That road barely handles the traffic it has now, not to mention County Line Road. Both of those would need to be upgraded in order to support the highest and best use of this property if it's determined by this commission to be as an SF2. I urge this commission to take a look at all of the factors in making this decision and calculate how the best use of this property is not only for that property, but for every one of us here tonight who own property around it. Your responsibility is not just to this landowner, it's to every one of us. And I would ask that as you consider that, that you deny the petition to rezone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carla Doty, and I'm not going to bother you all with all the things you just heard already. So, let's make it really, really simple. This piece of property is an island. It is surrounded on three sides by Elm Springs, Arkansas. Elm Springs, Arkansas is primarily rural. We did choose that. I'm sorry that there's an island that you all are having to deal with, but if the thing was reversed, I would hope our city would consider your city's population when they made their decision, and that's all I'm asking you to do. Our city wants you all to keep things compatible with your sister city, and all of those other factors can play in, but it really comes down to that. And that's what I want you to think about, because that does impact the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
I may be the last one. My name is John Welton. I live at 848 Elm Springs Road. Recently bought the property. I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said. If you were in my shoes or our shoes, what would you be saying tonight? What can we say to get you to understand how we feel in the position that you may or may not put us in? So, I ask that you think before you decide, and think about the people that live in another city that your judgment tonight is going to make a difference for. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
I'm Toller. I live at, I'm Mary Allen, and I live at 906 King Arthur. And we were here last year at the same time about a flooding issue that we had at mine, well, in our whole neighborhood. But I happened to be at a, a point in that neighborhood where these homes will directly affect my house. Last year, y'all said that part of the problem was that, you know, Elm Springs needed to take care of some of the problems. Some of the problems were approved by y'all, but the ballpark was supposed to take care of the flooding that I have at my house. I have a, I have a driveway that is underwater when it has a moderate rain. And I get hit from three different ways. If this goes into, if y'all approve this tonight, I will be totally flooded out from the amount of rain that will happen. And I've got pictures to show because y'all videoed it last year and promised me that y'all would do something and get something done. And nothing, of course, has been done, and I've gotten to the point where I don't even talk about it. I kind of just hide in my house or come out and remove rocks all the time. And, but I do have some pictures that y'all will be amazed at. If you look back at your video, actually, one of the TV channels wanted to come out and interview me because my house was so bad with water. And I refused to do it because I wanted to give y'all a chance to make it right and to make Elm Springs have the opportunity. But we don't have easement rights either to our land. Elm Springs doesn't. So, we can't do anything. We're stuck. If y'all approve these houses, we're stuck in a mess, is what I, from between the ballpark or the runoff comes that way, from where y'all, from that, it's just comes from four, three or four different ways. And I'm not the worst person. There's one person that's worse than me, and she's next door. But I get the hit first. And it's almost like I would call it a roaring, a roaring river or at the bottom of what you call a waterfall, where it comes and it splashes, and it's deep. And I cannot get out of my driveway as it is now. And I would hope that if there was a disaster that I could get out and go see. I have a grandson that's sick. He's a, and I just want to make sure that when he, if anything happens to him, I'm able to get out of my driveway. Right now, I can if it rains. Because you can't see the driveway to get out. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure that y'all are aware that this happened one year ago. And it continues to happen. I was going to say, they said it's a hundred, a hundred and fifty year flood, but it happens every time it rains. So, we can't have a hundred and fifty year rains every time it rains. Just can't do it. So, I mean, I'd be more than willing to share the pictures with y'all, but I know y'all are probably bored out of that flooding issue. But it is a bad, it is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Tim Heileman, and I have, my company has two building lots in Camelot subdivision on King Arthur. And I will attest to everything that Mary just spoke of because she's my business partner. And, and we do have a sick grandson, and she, and her driveway is underwater in a moderate rainfall, just not a hundred and fifty year flood. I know we've been through all this a year ago. We had this big meeting. But I would like to mention something that the young lady said earlier about those twenty acres being an island, in way, it is. It's, it is an island, and everything around it is water. And she made a, an awesome point, that if you put structures on it and you put roads on it, then where's the water going to go? And I do have a visual aid if you guys care to see it. It is large enough to, to see, but, you know, something no one's touched on is the elevation. The elevation of that property is about seventeen, I think it's seventeen, excuse me. The elevation of that property there on County Line Road is right at twelve hundred and seventy-five feet elevation. The, the twenty acres there is approximately twelve hundred and seventy feet elevation. The back part of that property is twelve hundred and fifty feet elevation. Then you get down to King Arthur, and it goes over down to about twelve hundred and thirty feet. So, where all that, where that water's not going to run uphill. It's not going to run back towards County Road. It's not going to run up Ball Street. It's not going to run up to Kerry Smith. It's not going to run up County Line Road. It's going to go to Camelot subdivision. And I don't think there's anything that anybody's going to do unless they spend billions of dollars to follow that water around the suburb. So, I'm, I'm with what the young lady said about it is an area of land that does absorb water. But like Mary stated, even though the water's absorbed, her house is still flooded. So, I just want everyone just to take into consideration, if you, if it is, if the zoning is changed and you do put a lot of homes on there, again, to reiterate what another person said, is the homes in there are three hundred and fifty thousand dollar plus homes. And, and I know the homes that you're putting in something like that is going to be in the neighborhood of, you know, two hundred to two hundred and forty thousand dollar homes. What's that going to do to the value of our, our neighborhood? It's going to bring it down. If you want to talk about the street traffic, County Line Road is terrible. I follow them out of my car all the time unless I go into the other lane of traffic to avoid the humps and the, and dents in the road because of water damage. And the same thing on Ball Street. I mean, I got a lot of pictures that show there's a moderate rainfall with a runoff from Legendary, which is north of Kerry Smith. There's, there, it doesn't really show it on the picture up here, but there's a trough that feeds about seventy yards from the, hopefully, King Arthur to Ball Street. And that's where the majority of the water comes in just the afternoon showers. That's where that water comes from, is it comes from that area. So, my, my plea is if you re, if you're doing a zoning, they're going to put humps there, where's the water going to go? I mean, what is the city going to do before they approve the plat? That there's a solution for where the water's going to go? Because right now, it's just going to go to her driveway and to the other homes in Camelot that I have plenty of pictures where the water level, and we talked about this flooding, but again, King Arthur's twelve, uh, twelve hundred and thirty feet, that property's twelve hundred and seventy feet. It's going to just go straight to the Camelot subdivision, and anyway, I'm, I'm opposed to the rezoning at this time until some type of engineering studies can be done to say where's the water going to go besides Camelot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's any other comments that are, we, we get it as far as the water and as far as the street improvements and so forth on there. Everyone's welcome to continue to speak on it, but those are some things that we've, we've heard loud and clear on it.
So, my name's Nathan Miles. I live in Camelot. I hear you loud and clear. I have an acre and a half property that sits adjacent to this development. And to your point, the, the flooding has been spoken to. Mayor Sprouse is well aware of the problem. We, we think that a park may help, but we don't know until those plans are devised. But to just be very straightforward, we, we don't want another Riggins neighborhood behind us. They've filled up Legendary, and we do not want that adjacent to our half million dollar homes. I worked very hard to develop our acre and a half to Fishers. I know everyone that has spoke tonight, we bought that property for a reason. So, it's very important to us to maintain that value. We've seen what this builder does. We've, we know what his reputation is in West Springdale. We see what he builds. And that's not a product or quality home that is going to promote the value of ours. And I think it's very easy to argue that it will downgrade the value of our properties. And it, something that I want to spoke to is that many of these Riggins developments have very loose, if no POAs. So, there's no restrictions on vehicles. There's no requirements on privacy fences or any of the other things that our POA protects us. And they're also high rental neighborhoods. So, all tho, all these different factors that we've missed or brushed on, that's what comes with this type of a development when you put four homes on an acre. So, to not be long-winded, I, I appreciate Mrs. Christie's comment, but when it's a matter of health and safety, it's all of our business if we have flooding issues. So, I get that it may not be a direct matter of this, this group, but it's a matter of all of ours. And I would please petition you folks to turn down this zoning at this time.
Thank you.
And I, I'm not saying it's not an issue we shouldn't address. This is just not the place that we're addressing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
My name is Tom Beninkosa. I live at 807 King Arthur. Six months ago, I bought a lot next door to my house. So, now I have two lots that face up against the north side of that in the very back end, the highest point as been mentioned. We're curious of all the considerations for what people have worked hard to invest their lives in to have a nice place to live. We chose to live in Elm Springs so we could get to our jobs a little bit easier in Springdale and back to Bentonville. We invested with good faith that we would have a property that we can be proud of. Last thing that we would like to see is some project coming in and changing that. We have worked hard our whole lives to have this, and all we're asking is some consideration for your fellow neighbors, but also people that are business owners in your own community. That's what we're asking for, is that consideration of our properties and our investments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments in the audience? Let's do the commission.
Um, hang on. We went to, we had City Futures Five not too long ago. And when we went up there, we had big discussions on what are we wanting to see for the future of Springdale. We've had several discussions in here of what we want to see the northwest part of Springdale, how we would like to see it develop and grow. And if we want to stick to what we've discussed, if we want to, to stick with what City Futures Five, what we talked about there, we have got to put our money where our mouth is. Quarter acre lots where we have areas that we want to develop to expand Springdale, to bring in a different type of families into this area to where we want, we have a chance to develop this in a right way. Are quarter acre lots viable in Springdale? Yes. Are MF12s viable in Springdale? Yes. They have to be, but they are in strategic areas. I'm not real sure that where this is when you look at the subdivision, which is Elm Springs, I understand. And I know y'all have had flooding issues, and y'all's mayor's right over here, and he just knows about those just as much as our mayor does too. Okay, we'll put that out there. But not only do you have this, but you have other areas of subdivisions through there that have acre lots, half acre lots. We need to really address these issues that we've talked about before. And I am not in favor of this quarter acre lot in this area. Although, I am in favor of developing this area in the future to make it with the neighbors that are out there and with the other subdivisions that are out there. I am not against developing this, but I am against quarter acre lots in this area.
Yeah, I would agree with y'all. I mean, you all know my passion for the Northwest Corridor and Springdale and that. And, you know, we've seen it month after month now that there is, there is something in the Northwest Corridor that keeps coming in front of us on there, but, you know, it's, it's another area. And this is really kind of for you all as well, as far as the Elm Springs, there's, and, and those that live in the Northwest Corridor. The city has been doing a good job as far as the Ballpark District. That's a, it's probably one of the most restrictive as far as how ordinances are in a good way around where the Children's Hospital is and everything. And then we've gone to form-based code as far as with the downtown area, which is really the most progressive probably in Northwest Arkansas. So, the city's really kind of getting into different zones. Northwest Corridor is another one of those that, 612 just opened. Jim, I think you're probably driving a, a lot already. It's going to develop, and it's going to develop rapidly, especially when you have JB Hunt that's building a third tower right now as far as that type of business. I agree. I mean, there's a place for different developments. One thing I will call out, though, is we've heard several times as far as multi-family. Really gets a bad reputation in, in the whole piece. There is good multi-family as far as in certain locations. Now, the other thing to look at too is, is that next generations, those are the types of things that they're looking for as far as those, that type of housing is. of things that they're looking for as far as those, that type of housing is concerned. Uh, but again, there's, there's a place for that as far as that type of growth. Um, my only comment overall is, is that this is an area that we have got to focus on and, and get planned out, uh, to, um, just add on to the comments that you had as well. And this is just another example as far as the urgency, um, and especially with where we have a, a new, uh, park that's going to go as well associated with this. Um, but I would also echo as far as, I don't know that the flooding problems are going to go away with just the efforts that happen as far as in Springdale. Those are certain things that your city still has to address too as far as the flooding, uh, is concerned, so, but, uh, and, uh, yeah, I've seen the pictures, and it, and it is pretty bad in, in your locations on that, but, um, those are just the additional comments that I had.
On this, on this, on this property, we also, we've got the potential of, we're voting on the potential of eighty homes going in here. Minimum, or probably average, be a hundred and sixty cars, piece of property. The County Line Road and Ball Road barely handle what they got right now. Not the time to allow that type of congestion in that area until road improvements are ready.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm Brian Moore with Engineering Services. Guys, I, I'm a little perplexed with it, this is an SF two zone, which is a low-density residential in the city of Springdale. We've turned in a preliminary plat, it's sixty lots. It's not eighty, it's sixty. There's only three per acre. Y'all have got it, you're going to vote on it here in just a, a few if this passes. Uh, it's not the lot size that makes a difference, okay? It's not whether it's a seventy foot lot, if you go to SF one, Brian, it's eighty foot lot, okay? Ten foot a lot's not going to make a difference. The difference is what they build on that lot and what goes there, okay? If you, if you end up with an eighty foot lot there, you may build an extra hundred square foot on the house. Not everybody can afford five thousand square foot homes, okay? That's not what this is. This is SF two, low-density residential, okay? City staff actually, you know, in their recommendation, they're recommending for approval for a low-density residential. As seen in Harbor Meadows, whether it's a thirty foot lot, it can be done nice. That's, I, I think we're looking at, at different apples to oranges. Uh, you know, I know Patsy's working on single-family design standards, and that may be where it goes, but that's not a reason to, uh, be against an SF two, I mean, these lots are seventy-three foot wide.
Not against an SF two, and, and none of our comments are against an SF two. It is where that is going to be placed. And this is not compatible, in my opinion, as a planning commissioner, that this needs to be where this is.
Okay, what does the land use plan in the area show?
Well, I know what the land use plan shows, but I know what we're, the vision we have for that area, for the Northwest, uh, part of Springdale. And that's not fitting the vision. That's why we're doing this ordinance for the indoor housing. And I know that what we have seen, what we're wanting to develop out there, how we're wanting the city to grow, you went to City Futures Five too, you heard the conversations also. And so, that's what we're trying to accomplish here as far as bringing in subdivisions who are not compacted in that we have, and I know that you can fit nice houses, I live in Harbor Meadows, I know you can fit high, but that's a total, that's apples and oranges, that's a putt, this is not a putt. So, I don't want to get into a big debate about that, but I know what's out there, I know what plantation is, I know what Pinkley Estates are.
Okay, you know what Legendary is?
And I know what all of that is there. I do know what Legendary is. And I saw what Ralph Coleman did to that, and they destroyed that. And so, we don't want that. Okay, that's what we're talking about right here.
Again, it's not, it's not the houses that they build, or not the, the lot size, it's what's being built, from what you just said.
Well, it can go both ways though, Brian. I mean, to these people out here and to what we see, it can go both ways.
Well, we can debate this a lot on here, but I mean...
I'd just like to say, city staff is recommended approval, this is a low-density development, uh, and we're asking for the, the SF two zoning.
All right, I appreciate it. So, we had a call for the vote by Mr. Covert, okay?
Commissioner, can I clarify something for the record, real quick? The gentleman that just spoke said that SF two is low-density, and I believe in the regulations, SF two is actually considered medium-density. So, just to clarify...
Four units per acre is considered to be low-density.
Your statutes say SF two is considered to be medium-density residential living.
Okay, thank you.
Can I call real now?
Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
No.
Powell?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
Hany?
Yes.
Uh, this does not pass five to two.
You have the right to appeal the planning commission's decision to the city council. Your, uh, appeal has to be filed with the city clerk within fifteen days. You have to indicate why you think the planning commission's decision was an error, you have to notify the adjacent property owners they can, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Let me just give it a minute for those that are leaving. All right, next item on the agenda are eighteen dash twenty-three, Legend Builders Incorporated, Kent Burnett Properties Incorporated, twenty-seven fifty-six North Fifty-Sixth Street, from SF one to SF two, presented by ESI.
This is Jason with ESI. Um, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of trying to decide how I want to present this, since this is very similar to the, uh, rezoning request we just heard, and in a, a similar area, um, we are requesting this, uh, I guess it's fifteen acres, um, in this case, uh, to be rezoned from SF two to, from SF one to SF two. Um, we are currently, um, requesting a zone for the back half of the back five acres, um, to be an RSF four zone in Elm Springs. So, I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
The Comprehensive Land Use Plan indicates low-density residential use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies that the Comprehensive Land Use Plan has recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Applicable locations for single-family, multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors assure adequate land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. And you do have an email that we received today from Doug and Karen Sarver indicating they are opposed to it. I can read it if you want me to, or we can just stipulate that it gets put into the file. They are opposed to the rezoning request. Do you want me to read it?
Um, if you would, please, for the record.
To whom this may concern, we are unable to attend the planning commission meeting on May first, twenty eighteen, concerning the rezoning of property located on North Fifty-Sixth Street. However, we'd like to make known our opposition to this rezoning. We are residents of Saddle Ridge Estates located to the south of the property in question. We have great concerns that the rezoning from SF one to SF two may cause concern for the following reasons. Saddle Ridge Estate is comprised of sixteen one-acre lots. The scale of the proposed additional will add sixty homes in a twenty-acre area, five homes per acre. We built here to have the convenience of town, but the atmosphere of the country, houses that are that close and stacked in, something found in areas where land is at a premium. There is an abundance of acreage in this area of town that could be considered if the developer would reconsider and build on half to one-acre lots, that would be more desirable and fit in better with the surrounding neighborhoods. We are afraid this development will alter the essential character of the neighborhood and will negatively affect the neighborhood's property values. Currently, North Fifty-Sixth is a narrow two-lane road. The addition of sixty more homes in one subdivision poses a threat to the health and safety of those who travel by car and those who bike or jog along the route. Overall, the changes in use is not desired by the Saddle Ridge neighbors. Thank you for consideration of our concerns. Best regards, Karen and Doug Sarver.
Any questions or comments from the audience?
Well, Jerry Cork, and I also live in Saddle Ridge Estates, and I would have to mimic everything the people from Elm Springs just said. Uh, I realize this commission's issue isn't the water, but, uh, if y'all know about our bridge on North Fifty-Sixth, that's the direction all the water goes. Uh, I'm very familiar with Springdale. I'm very familiar with the way Springdale has progressed over the last, over twenty-five years. Uh, I know how neighborhoods affect Springdale. Um, fifteen years ago, me and my wife wanted to move to a nice area of Springdale. We had our choice between Secretariat on the east side of forty-nine, and, well, forty-nine wasn't even built at the time, but we had our choice between Secretariat or Saddle Ridge. Um, I went back and looked at the master plan and the plats and saw that this new four-twelve bypass was going in. It, I found out fifteen years ago it was going to affect the Secretariat subdivision. That's why I purchased in Saddle Ridge. I, fifteen years ago, paid attention to what the city of Springdale wanted to do for the city of Springdale. Um, our area is SF one right now, which is four residences per acre. Um, I understand that, I'm okay with that, um, but I, I would feel somewhat betrayed by the city if, now that we're there, we say, oh, we, we don't want to do that master plan anymore, we're going to change it on you. Um, it's always been from agriculture to then SF one, and, uh, I, I think that because of that area, because it's wide open, the city has a lot of input on how it's going to be developed. If we start putting small neighborhood, or small lot neighborhoods in that area, it's going to continue, and then the west side of town will be just like the east side of town. So, that's, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all forgive me if I goof up here, I hadn't done this before, but anyway, I have property, I'm Huey Couch, I have property directly across from that beside Larry Bunch's place, he has the horse ranch. Um, the, uh, city plan, y'all, y'all have discussed all this with Elm Springs, the other property. I think it's a similar situation, uh, other than the water, like we said. Uh, the appearance, uh, of a SF two, uh, is indicated across the city. There are many cars parked on the street in these locations because many of them are rental. Uh, that is the appearance that I see when I look at other places, and I went and looked at them. And, uh, you know, uh, the Saddle Ridge and, uh, Tim's place there next door to it, where he has a isolated investment in his property and everything. Uh, I am against, um, you know, because I have property there, I plan on building on that, I'm retiring this year, and we're looking at a three thousand square foot home. My son has one built on the backside that I gave him two acres for. It's already like thirty-two hundred square feet, so it's, it's an investment. And, uh, just, uh, recommend that the appearance, the Fifty-Sixth Street is an artery that you all are working on to try to improve, I realize that. The extension of it, but that's going to take years. The, many people use that as a way to get home and go to work. It is very busy going north and south from Springdale to Bentonville or wherever they're going. And, uh, so there's a, there's a lot of things happening right there, and it is still a part of what was talked about with the other property that we just visited on. So, I like to recommend that it not be changed, uh, on the SF one to SF two. Uh, it does make a difference what you put on a ha, what you put on a property, but as far as I'm, as I understand, the city does not designate size of a dwelling house on property, is the way I understand it, so, but anything would help to have more value in a bigger piece of land to bet a house on would, would elevate the value of putting a larger house on it, rather than a small one and being half rental or whatever. So, I would leave that with you at that point.
Thank you. Jason, do you have something else?
Yeah, just one, one question for Patsy. What's, I'm not familiar with SF one zone. What's the, uh...
Eighty foot of frontage, ten thousand square foot.
Ten thousand square foot. So, just to clarify, if we stay SF one, we would basically lose two lots in our subdivision and still have, be able to develop it the same way and lose those two lots and still be at, instead of sixty lots, we'd be at fifty-eight lots. So, I mean, that's the density difference we're talking about in this situation, going from an SF one to an SF two. Um, and the reason is, the main reason is because of fire code and the ability to service, um, these homes in this area. Um, and so, working with the fire marshal, we, we basically ended up with sixty lots, um, to meet the fire code intent, unless we sprinkled those houses, and every house in there would be sprinkled, then we could increase the density to get more of a compatible SF two, or a, a more dense area in the SF two zone. So, I say that to say that whenever we were doing the initial design and we went through as an SF two, asked for the SF two zone, we had more units per acre designed initially, um, until we went through the design review. So, um, we'd still like to, you know, be rezoned to SF two, however, that's the density difference we're talking if, if we're not allowed to go to the SF two zone.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Larry Bunch. I have eight acres directly across from that proposed subdivision, and everything I'll say you've probably heard, I don't hear well, so I don't know what's been said. But, um, our road will not handle that traffic when, if they put sixty-four houses in there and you pop two cars out each one of those houses, and then you get a kid in there, and all of a sudden, you've got, um, a hundred and thirty cars there, that road just will not in any way handle that traffic. The mayor, if he comes down there and stands on the corner of Elm Springs and Oak Grove, I mean, you could just park there and just stay all day long if you wanted to. But the morning when school and school traffic and work traffic, it's backed up pitiful. But, um, and with the properties around there, most people, like everyone's already said, the houses are on acres and more. And, um, I'm all for progress, but I don't, would prefer that things be built that don't do anything to harm the property values that are out there. I've been out there fifteen years, and, um, I sure would like things to stay really nice out there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, just one more comment for me. Saddle Ridge, according to the Springdale zoning map, is SF two?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Jim Fort, and I own the land just, uh, just north of the, right there in the corner of County Line and, uh, North Fifty-Sixth Street. And, uh, I bought the place twenty-three years ago to kind of keep out of the big developments and stuff. And the other day, I keep my head above water, I was going to sell an acre or two off of my land, and come to find out, I had to sell two hundred feet off of the, my road frontage because I couldn't sell them an acre, I had to have two hundred feet of road frontage. And I don't know why that is, because all these houses in town, right, none of them got two hundred feet of road frontage. So, all I'm saying is just like they said about the, the development over there on Ball Road, this road ain't going to handle all that traffic. And yeah, they have to widen the road on their side of the road, but by the time the rest of it's developed, if the city waits for all the builders to develop the road, well, it ain't never going to be developed. If, in the plan, and when I bought it in nineteen ninety-three, it showed where North Fifty-Sixth Street was supposed to be widened. Well, then they turn around during all this time, because our vest was built out there, they widen that. they widen that street, but ours is still just down to a two lane. So I'm just saying the traffic on that. And I bought mine to invest in, little, you know, to invest in the land. And I'd sure hate to see the back of my property with a bunch of little smaller houses and smaller lots when the rest of them are all acre lots all around there, five acre lots. So that's all I got to say. Just consider it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'm Tim Graham, and I'm a neighbor. I usually don't say anything at, at one of these because I develop and go through the planning commission and stuff all the time, too. But, and it's zoned SF1, and SF1 is four units per acre, SF2 is four units per acre. So you can put the same density on it. It's not going to be that many more homes. The only, it's going to be, actually, you could probably put the same amount of homes on it if you design it right. And I know Jason can. And whenever it went from being agriculture to SF1, I didn't want to say anything about it because I thought, you know, SF1's okay out there. I'd preferred it been RE zoning, which is one acre lots. But, you know, being involved in the different zonings, I didn't want to have to come up here and say, and speak against anything. And I'm still not going to speak against it. I'm going to tell you, the only difference is a 70-foot wide lot to an 80-foot wide lot. And Jason's right, there's not that much difference. And if there's not that much difference, you know, you can leave it the same. It's not going to hurt them any, or you can change it, whichever one y'all feel like. But to me, if they stay 80-foot wide, you're going to see a little bit nicer homes, a little bit nicer homes out in that area. And it'll help protect a lot of the other neighbors that's in there. I developed Saddle Ridge, and those are one acre lots. When did we develop that? So we've tried to keep things out there nice and, and clean. And you know, if it was a, if we had some restrictions on the type of houses, the size of the house to go on the lots, it'd make it a lot easier. I mean, if they, if it was a 70-foot wide lot and it was the right style home, I'm okay with it. But with the way our zoning works right now, we don't have that in place. I know we're working on it. And if we get to that, I think it'd make it a much, much better. I think for right now, though, I'm good with SF1. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments to the commission?
I think it speaks to the importance of good residential standards and on that, make that a priority. But I, I mean, I will say, just from personal experience, I've had the same concerns and, you know, coming from a, a house on a large lot and had some smaller subdivisions come in around us as time came, which is what happens with development. And a lot of it depends on the house they choose to build. And I don't think density SF1 versus SF2 is going to make, going to be more about the housing standards.
It's be a call for the vote.
Call for vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Powell.
Parsley?
No.
Powell?
No.
Tyler?
No.
Compton?
No.
Covert?
No.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
This has not passed five to two.
Again, you have the right to appeal your, the planning commission's denial to the city council has to be filed within 15 days in the city clerk's office. You have to explain why you think the planning commission's decision was an error. And you have to notify the adjacent property owners of that.
Yeah. So Jason, on this next one?
We're going to table that one?
Yeah, request a table, next two items.
All right, next item, replat 18-02, replat lot three, Hammett Oath Business Center, west side of North Fortis and south side of Hale, presented by McClellan Engineering.
My name is Rick McGraw. I'm with McClellan Engineers on behalf of the applicant, the owner. We're just requesting a replat of this lot to remove the asphalt drive into the property to have a different configuration for the site plan. Here to answer any questions you may have.
It's kind of a unique little driveway. We're not exactly sure how that happened, are we?
Yeah, no, we're not. Still scratching our heads on that.
Yeah.
Staff comments?
Uh, we will need finished floor elevations and calculations. All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. And approval will be contingent on getting a deed to the property to the south. You know, the issues that we've got with the deed, and that's being worked on, so that still has to be addressed.
Yeah, we've been working with the landowner to get back to, basically backtrack it all the way to where it was planted and then go from there because it's a private drive, so it's owned by the owners of that lot, so.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
Call for the vote.
This is a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comment.
Motion by Mr. Powell, second by Mrs. Haney.
I'm getting there.
That's all right.
I'm just going to take a wild stab at this. Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Replat passes seven zero.
Assuming you can get the legal description worked out, if you want this replat to go to council, it needs to be in our office by Thursday at noon.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, replat 18-03, replats of lots one and two, Churchill Crescent Phase Two, west of Arkansas Circle, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. We are requesting to combine these two lots at the end of Churchill Crescent Phase Two with this replat. I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
This is kind of a unique situation in that there is a covenant that addresses the access to this piece of property, how the sewer is handled, so it's a little bit different. That filed document needs to be noted on the plat so that we know what governs all that kind of stuff.
The final plat or the fi, the filed?
The filed, it needs to be on the replat itself. Uh, there are some administrative errors that need to be corrected, and we need to provide the basis for the bearings in the point of beginning. It's the only comments that we have left.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience to the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney, second by Mr. Covert. Yeah, he's coming right back.
Yeah. Can we wait just a second?
It's all about you.
All righty, Powell? Hello, Powell?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
I made a motion to approve. That's why.
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes. Replat passes seven zero.
Want that to go to council next week. Needs the ordinance to be in the mayor's office, or in our office by noon on Thursday.
Okay, thanks.
All right, next section, large scale. We have a couple of large scales on here. First one, L 18-06, Seven Brew Coffee, 2940 West Sunset. Also has two variances, variance of modification commercial design standards to internal walkways, customer entrance variance for off-street parking, seven spaces to be located between row and building, waiver of sidewalk and streetlight requirements presented by Bates and Associates.
Jason Young with Bates and Associates. And we're requesting the variances because the nature of the business is it doesn't have a customer entrance. It's drive-through only, so that's the, that's the main reason that we're asking for the majority of the variances.
So when you say drive-through only, you can't walk up and get a gift card or anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, it's going to be truly drive-through only?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Staff comments?
So you're basically asking for the design to be estimated with the elevations that we have. Everybody familiar with what it's going to look like? There is no foundational landscaping, correct?
That is correct.
There is no internal pedestrian walkway because, as you said, nobody's going to, people can't walk up to it. You have to drive through.
That's correct.
Uh, so there's no awnings or, or arcades over the customer entrance? There's not any of that? There's no sidewalk along the full length? And you have proposed how many parking spaces? Seven?
Yes, seven.
And those seven spaces are for employees only?
That is correct.
And they'll be marked as employees only?
Um, yes, we can.
So I mean, nobody's going to walk up, so I wanted to say employees only. Okay, then your waiver request is for sidewalks and streetlights on 412?
That is correct.
Is anything there now? You're leasing the property?
Yes, they're leasing the property, and there's no sidewalks within, I think I found there's no sidewalks within a quarter mile of the property. And it's such a short section.
No streetlights. Is there not going to be any lighting in the parking lot at all?
No, there's no lot, there's no parking lot lighting.
Is there any lighting on the side of the building that will light the driveways that it's drive-up only, so you can see how to get around the building?
I'm not really sure about the actual building lighting.
Does the sign light up?
I'm not sure if it's, is it an illuminated sign? Yes, it is an illuminated sign.
Is the sign location shown on the, on the drawing?
Are you asking about the sign on the building or the actual si, monument sign?
Is, is there both? Is there a sign on the building? Is there a monument sign too?
I think we've.
Where's it located?
I think we determined we can't do a monument sign because that is a large easement across the right of way. So the only signage, from what I understand, will be on the building.
Right answer. Okay, we'll make sure that we're still on that same page. I think that's, that's all we've got. So that's their variances. No internal walkways, no customer entrances, only seven spaces, no foundational landscaping, and they're asking you to approve the design as submitted. What are the materials that this is made out of?
Do you want to answer?
Hi, my name's Kevin Cooper. I'm the architect for the project. As you can see from the drawing, there's a brick wainscote that goes around the entire building. It also wraps the back of the building. The remainder of the building is a, is this architectural metal panel. If you want to pass that around. There's no exposed fasteners. It's a pretty clean look. I've also got some pictures here you can pass around. You might have, there's three other stores, two in Rogers, one in Bentonville.
And it's a similar layout for all of those? They don't have foundational landscaping?
Yes, it's a prototype design.
But they do have a pedestrian access on one of them?
Uh, that, I don't think, the, the intent is that there is no pedestrian access. But, you know, that, there are, there is a door that, you know, if somebody decided to come up there, you know, what are you going to say? No. I, I, so I don't, but the intent is that it's drive-through only.
And we've already discussed the parking situation with this. Issues with the, uh, saved ice place.
Any questions or comments? To the commission?
So I can only speak to the one I've seen in Bentonville, but this just happens to be on the way to where I go back to work for work. But the building has a clean look, as you can see in the pictures. I was actually pretty pleased with, with what the product they had there when I saw them on the docket for tonight. It's, it's a well-kept, well-entended unit. There's just a lot of trash around it. At his point, because there's not picnic tables, there's not a lot of walk-up traffic, you don't have a lot of people hanging around the outside. I think it is designed to simply pull up, but if somebody gets out of their car and walks over and wants coffee, they're a customer, they're going to take care of them. The most part, the one I've seen in Bentonville, which is the only one I can speak to.
Any other comments? So we've got the waiver and two variances on here. Right. The waiver would be a recommendation.
A motion to approve the waiver?
Recommendation, motion for Mrs. Haney? Second by Mr. Covert?
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Waiver passes seven zero. Be a call for the vote. We can take the variances individually or separate?
Call for the vote with them together? Both of them?
I said that wrong, individually or together? Yes, you followed me on that. So we're doing them together?
Together, okay.
And who was that?
Mrs. Haney.
Okay.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Variance is past seven zero.
Motion to approve large-scale subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Powell?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haney.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Large scale passes seven zero.
Seth will prepare the resolution, and the waiver request goes to council on the 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item, L 18-01, Northwest Technical Institute, 709 Old Missouri. Variance for deletion of paved parking, parking requirement for new welding technology building, presented by McClellan Engineering.
Rick McGraw with McClellan Engineering. Just wanted to point out that the variance for the removal of the parking, there is more than adequate parking for the facility, Northwest Technical Institute, at this time. We're actually providing 17 new spaces with this project. The removal of the paved parking is going to allow for overflow for, to serve for the use of the new welding expansion and the future expansion to the west side of that.
Staff comments?
So the variance, you're asking for that to be waived until the welding tech building and the ammonia tech building are expanded?
Yeah, so we have concerns with the amount of ammonia in regards to the asphalt paving there. So we want to kind of play that by ear as that comes online. And so that's why we're requesting not to do that right now and to wait as that development comes on in the future to play that and then proceed accordingly, basically.
Can we do a bill of assurance to make sure that that's in there if, you know, so that if all of us are not here when this comes up sometime in the future, we've got something that records that?
I mean, as a state-funded project, I can't speak on behalf of the state in terms of what they can do, but, I mean, I do.
Okay.
We, 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 our intent is to meet those requirements.
The ownership of the property is in the name of Northwest Technical Institute. It is not in the ownership of the state. So the Board of Northwest Techno, NTI can actually make the.
That's not necessarily true. That is state property. It is their.
If you can move up to the mic.
Part of the state. I'm Richard Alderman. I'm with the architects firm that has been hired by the state to build their project for them on the site. So I have the owner here and everybody, I say the owner, I have the manager out there here and the other people that are involved. And we'd be more than glad to talk about that with anybody. But we did, Patsy, a large master plan of the entire site to show you all the things that they want to do over the next few years, and we wanted to be very upfront.
I'm not arguing with that. I understand what you want to do. What we're saying is if we get a bill of assurance that if that doesn't happen, then this area could be packed.
Patsy, the state will not sign a bill of assurance.
Okay.
There's just nothing that I can do about that.
We'll leave this for the attorneys to work out, okay?
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, we'll leave that for the attorneys to work out.
Okay, anything else?
So there are some issues about the sidewalk, and I think that's already been waived. Didn't the NTI get a waiver of the sidewalk requirement previously on?
I believe that last time we, we met with you and you did that.
I think we've already done the waivers of the sidewalks.
Yes.
Uh, what about lighting in the parking lot?
We gave, we, we submitted a parking lot lighting layout and a, a lighting deal with it. I, I had not heard that there was any problems with it.
Okay. Maybe I'm remembering the wrong one. Ryan, Chris, is there a lighting issue with this one?
Your, your mic's not working.
Sorry. The way to development, there was only one light pole proposed in the parking lot. It's, and there were lights on the building. Right, but we need to show that in a photometric plan. We submitted a.
If you can move up to the mic.
I'm sorry, we submitted a photometric plan for that.
Right, and I can read limit and send zero, which there's nothing, so there was nothing for that area. And I highlighted lights for the ADA parking lot. Elevated parking lot, I disposed of someone producing a project today. It's been different with that because there are nine classes there.
We'll meet whatever requirements you want with that, Patsy. That's not a problem.
One of the issues we have is people walking through parking lots when it's dark and that kind of stuff, too.
I'm not sure that the, that, that what we got from the lighting consultant showed all that. We have lights all the way around the building. We have lights underneath that canopy that we have. We actually have. We actually have one light in the big parking lot, and then we have a street light on the new part of the street.
Okay, as long as you provide us with that, that it's covered, we'll be fine.
Not a problem, absolutely.
Anything else? Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission? So, on the variance, we taking it as is, or were you wanting to put the bill of assurance in there?
Let's, let us work it out with the attorneys.
So, are we not going to?
Sarah? Sorry.
I mean, if they're not going to agree to a bill of assurance on that, you can just vote on the proposal as is.
Either waive it or not waive it.
Correct.
And if they don't waive it, then they have to address the parking issue, I mean, the paving issue, so, okay?
Correct.
Again, we did, we did a large scale, we did a complete master plan of the whole site. We showed all the projects that are going to be built over a long period of time. This is out five, 10 years, maybe even 15. The building next door, which is the ammonia building, we have, we're working on a donation, a large donation, to be able to expand that building, which is the way the state works most of the time. And what we are going to be able, what we don't want to do is to pave that parking lot and then have to tear it up.
Is there an, is there a potential that we can do the variance with a certain years of stipulation as far as that variance?
Sarah, Sarah, can we give them a variance for X number of years? I don't know how we record that.
I, I would revise against that.
Because we don't have any way to revise it if, I mean, to know when it's, if we don't have a bill of assurance or something, so.
Okay.
And we're not arguing that you had a master plan. We understand that part, but you're just standing there telling us that you can't commit to anything else except this right now, so, kind of puts us in a little bit of an area where the master plan is good, but we don't know that you're going to be able to do that either.
See, we've had this discussion a lot of times.
I know.
You're going to move up to the mic.
This is, again, state property, and you all don't have another piece of state property like this in your city. Up in, at Inwak, up in Northwest, up in Bentonville, they have one. At the university, they have one. These kind of issues don't come up at those planning commissions because people know that all they can do is fund what they have in front of them right now. That's all the state will commit for. In fact, the state won't commit funds past a year of the construction.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Again, I just want to state, your obligation is as to city regulations. If they have any issues with the state funding and state regulations, that's up for them to discuss. Some may be something for them to discuss with my office, but that is outside of your purview.
And I know the discussions with Inwak, it hasn't come up that it's a state-owned facility, belongs to the Inwak-
You're going to have the same discussion when you have a large-scale development for Inwak on your property.
We have it up to this point, so.
Okay, so this will be a call for the vote on the variance?
They may be following the guidelines and not asking for that type of a waiver, so.
So, are we putting the, the two variances, deletion of the paved parking surface?
Just one.
Yeah, it's just one, I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mr. Covert.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
No.
Passes five to two. And have a motion on large scale?
Motion to approve large-scale subject staff comment.
Motion by Mr. Powell, second by Mrs. Haney.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Taller?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yeah.
Haney?
Yes.
Large-scale passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, L-18-10 Haley Lane Commercial Building, 4108 Haley Lane, presented by McClellan Engineering.
Again, Rick McGraw with McClellan Engineering, here to represent this project. And it's just a commercial development LSD project off of Haley Lane, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Staff comments?
Hey, you're not asking for any variances to the commercial design standards or anything, correct? Not tonight, anyway.
Not tonight, anyway.
Approve it tonight, they got to meet everything, okay? Uh, we do need to see the commercial units divided into their usage so that we know what uses you're intending to put in each of those areas and what the parking requirements would be for those. There's the landscaping requirements, the dumpster location. Do you have a dumpster location? And is it out adjacent to the street?
Uh, well, the intent was to be roll, it was to not have a dumpster service. It was just going to be roll-off service for the, because the use was just going to be a small office, and so the need for a dumpster was not required for that.
Then we need to work that out, and that needs to be noted, that they have to have that arrangement for roll-off carts and there's no dumpster location, okay?
Understood.
Underground utilities in that area, we won't talk about commercial design standards because you're telling me you're going to take care of all those. Engineering comments, you have to have a grading permit and a SWIP, the standard engineering comments, and as you know, I haven't been reading all those out loud because they're the same things every time. I'm assuming you all can read those for yourself. If the roof drains to the underground detention, indicate this on the drainage plan. Sidewalks on the west side of the driveway, need handicapped ramps. Streetlights, have you addressed streetlights?
Have not addressed streetlights. I understand if, if there was one required at that driveway, I do not believe there's any, any further east of that since there's an, it's an RA1 residential unit to that.
So, you'll put a streetlight at that location?
We can put a streetlight at that intersection. I do have a comment on the sidewalk continuing to the west. As it's a private drive, there's no dedicated right-of-way continuing on, so the sidewalk would lead to a fence. I mean, there's literally a fence that it's going to walk right into, so, you know.
You're going to have to come back and ask for that because you didn't ask for a waiver of the sidewalk.
Fair enough.
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Haney, second by Mr. Powell.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Large-scale passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Next item, L-18-11 Dixie Industrial Lots, two, three, west side of North Fortieth, north side of Dixieland, I'm sorry, Dixie Industrial, presented by McClellan Engineering.
Again, Rick McGraw, McClellan Engineers. It's another commercial development question LSD four, and I'm here to happy to answer any questions.
Again, you didn't ask for any variances, so you're meeting the commercial design standards?
It's our intent to meet the commercial design standards, yes.
Okay. All comments from the utility company and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. Need to show the legal description of the property and apply to subdivision, a suitable legal description will be lot, lot number whatever is the subdivision name. Standard comments for stormwater, lighting would also be required.
We did submit a photometric plan with this project, did not receive any comments on that as far as I'm aware.
I'm talking about streetlights. Streetlights again?
Yes, there is, there is streetlights along the north side of the property, and it looks like they're shown on there but not called out, so we can, we'll call them out, sure.
And know that they meet those, okay?
Okay, any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
To approve, sub-staff comment.
Motion by Mr. Powell, second by Mrs. Haney.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Large-scale passes seven zero.
Thank you. I just have a quick question on the variance for Northwest. We've already addressed that, so there's, it's later on in the agenda. There's no need to stick around for that since we've already talked about that.
Which one, for who?
For Northwest Technical. It was under the-
Yeah, we already took care of it.
Okay, all right.
Next item, 18-13 Speedy Splash Car Wash, 3515 East Robinson. And then there's a variance B-18-20, variance for modification of commercial design standard presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Jason Apple with ESI. This project is directly north of the neighborhood market on Butterfield Coach and Highway 412. We're proposing a Speedy Splash Drive-Thru Express Tunnel Car Wash. And I'll answer any questions.
Staff comments?
All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of the construction plans. So, your commercial design standard modification is there will be no foundation landscaping? You don't have a break in the facade because it's over 100 feet in length, correct? You got pictures you want to show us?
Well, so, it's the rear elevation. This is the, the front facing, which would face east. That's the rear elevation also that would face the entry road into Walmart. And my thought was that this is 100 feet. The distance from one end to the other is 100 feet. And we do have a projection, but it's on the front of the, on the front of the building. And so, what we're, what we're trying, what we're proposing is the foundation landscaping that would be in the front of the building, next to the vacuums, next to the parking area for those vacuums, would be placed on the rear of the building. That would be along this facade. So, we've got, we've got street trees along that driveway, and then we also have foundation landscaping as a buffer for this, this front. So, that was our, our modification request.
So, there's no actual break in the building, it's in the wall itself?
Not in the rear, right.
And that rear faces toward Legacy Bank?
Yes. And so, I don't know if you can, I don't know if you can see, zoom in on that, the landscaping little section there, but we are proposing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, six trees over the 100 feet, and then also the foundation landscaping was moved to, to that area along that, that portion of the building.
What size trees are you putting in?
Two-inch caliper.
What kind of?
Standard trees.
You're using for a screen, what kind of trees are they?
Well, I think those are more of like a street tree variety in that location. Uh, we've got an ornamental plum, so more of a low, a lower tree that would still screen that area. It's not going to grow 20 feet tall or, or.
Anything else? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
So, how far off, I mean, are we from our standards on that?
I don't think you're putting any additional trees. You're putting foundation landscaping on the opposite side instead of the front side, but there's no additional, correct?
I don't believe the street trees are required because there's not a parking area that's adjacent to the roadway.
So, those are, those are extra.
So, those street trees are additional, and then the foundation landscaping we're proposing to move right along that, that building facade or that frontage there.
It's not additional foundation landscaping, it's moving it from one side to the other.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so, he's got a frontage requirement off of a van or something, the internal street, and then he's got a frontage requirement on Sunset. The lane to the south is a private lane owned by Walmart. So, you're proposing your foundation landscaping not be on the east side but on the west side of the building is what you're saying, so.
Do you have elevations that you can show that are colored, or are they just?
No, they're, they're black and white. He's got a color swatch up here. That's, he's got a color swatch on it. We've got three different colors.
Can you speak into the mic?
Sorry. We do have three different color varieties. This is very similar to what was presented at the Elm Springs location.
We just haven't seen it yet, although it's got us a big pile of dirt.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just recently finished, or they're, they're working on finishing one in Fayetteville with similar colors, with like a gray, a grayish color for the block, and then a, I think the darker color is for the, the brick color, and then the, the trim pieces are the blue.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, the variance, which will be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Variance passes seven zero. Have a motion?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney, second by Mr. Covert.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Large-scale passes seven zero. Next item, L-18-14 Nordale Terraces, west side of North Thompson, .67 miles north of Randall Wabi, variance modification of multifamily design standards 18-21, presented by ESI.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to show the elevations. I don't think staff had color elevations at Thomas Central. And I think it'll clear up a lot of the multifamily design standard items. This is the property that we just requested to be rezoned MF12. There will be five unit, five units in each building. Each will have a garage that will allow us to increase our density from the eight units to, I believe, at 10.4 units per acre. And we are showing brick masonry for, I think it's about 75% of the facade to also increase that, get that bonus for the density. So, all the fronts will have a brick, a brick facade, the rears will have half-brick, half siding, and then these are the, the sides with, with the windows that weren't, weren't shown prior for staff.
Staff comments?
What kind of, what is your percentage of common open space that you're providing on this site? What kind of, what is your percentage of common open space that you're providing on this side? Do you, do you have the numbers?
Yep. Let me find it. Uh, we're proposing 1.5 acres, which is 21.4% of the site. Required 20.
What amenities are you providing in addition to that open space? Is this the one that has a tot lot and?
Yeah, we got some tot lots, we got some picnic areas.
Those are put in locations where they're together, people would be comfortable using them, they're not, they're not scattered out in dark areas or places like that, correct?
I believe so, yes.
You did have windows on all four sides. You do have straight and wide driveways, which encourage traffic to move quickly through there, but are you proposing any kind of traffic calming devices in this?
The intent was to show a couple of speed tables along that drive. I don't think they got shown on the plan, but that's, that's what I propose.
Does it have good pedestrian access from one location to the other, to the amenities and to other areas of the park? Or is it only just sidewalks in front of each of the buildings?
We've got one single sidewalk that runs at full length east-west. And then there are sidewalks in front of the units.
Multifamily building mass should incorporate visually heavier and more massive elements at the building base and lighter elements above the base, but you're showing the front of those to be all brick? Correct?
Yes.
On the front?
Yes, on the front.
But on the back, you've done that, but not on the side that you see from the, from the street? On the ends of the buildings that you see on that driveway, that's what you're going to see on the end, but when you pull down each one of those driveways, you're going to see brick with garage doors, correct?
Yes.
Is there entry landscaping with each one of the, the structures or each one of the units? Are they massed together in order to provide common driveways?
So we grouped them in between the driveways. And we have kind of little islands. I don't know, that's not a very good picture there.
Aaron, can you make that a little bit bigger or go to the lands, so we can see where we're talking about landscaping areas?
So, in, yeah, in between there, so it's kind of like a parking island that will be green, that will have a tree and then some landscaping as well.
No building foundation landscaping on the front, correct? You put the, the landscaping in those islands between, rather than having any landscaping in those areas between the front doors or anything like that, correct? Uh, mechanical and utility equipment screening, are they going to be on top or are they in the back and how will they be screened?
They'll be screened with a similar material to the building.
And they'll be in the back by the back doors of each one of those units?
Yes.
Or between the two?
They're going to be a central... I don't know about the AC units, I'm, I'm not for sure where the AC units will be.
They need to be screened?
But they'll be screened or they'll be on the roof.
Okay. And then did you submit a lighting plan to show lighting of the entire site?
We did. I reviewed that before the meeting. It's lacking a little. We'll, we'll add some lights to be compliant with the lighting standards.
Lighting plan that we have is not quite up to standard because there's some dark areas, and what we don't want is dark areas throughout this area. Stormwater issues, preliminary drainage reports, the engineering department has outlined some stormwater issues. I'm sure you're familiar with all of those. You need to do a street light at the intersection of the Drive and Thompson. And then I have to ask the police chief if, I mean, the fire chief, are there any issues with access? Wayne's still here? There he is, wrong side. Okay. Okay, this has a single, this has a single access point. Okay, are we comfortable with all that?
Yes, ma'am. The street's 26 feet wide. They've, they've given us required radius for turnarounds, dead-end hammerheads, basically. Each unit will be sprinkled with a two-hour separation to make it a single-family dwelling, but since there's more than 30 of them on a dead-end access, they'll have a 13D sprinkler system in them, and they'll have to have one inch, one-inch water meters.
That's not a problem, right? Jason?
No, it's not shown.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
Fencing, is it going to be all the way around the front, uh, complex?
What's that, sorry?
Fencing?
Fencing?
Yes, will that be fenced all around the complex?
I believe it's shown. It'll be screened. Yes.
What kind of fence are you putting in? I don't remember seeing the fencing on, I don't remember seeing fencing on it.
It's actually shown on the, it's not shown north. Because of the zoning of being MF12 on the north. It is shown on the south.
It's not multifamily use, it's single-family residential use. That area probably needs screening on, or fencing on the north side, too.
It shows a screening fence detail of, it looks like it's going to be timber with brick.
Yeah, so it'll be a brick separation every 50 feet.
And it's on the west side, the south side, and you can add it to the north side?
Yes.
Those are single-family homes on that side, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, call for the vote on the variance.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Variance passes seven zero. Have a motion on the large scale?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Second by Mr. Covert.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Large scale passes seven zero. See, next item on here, large scale, 18-15, Don Tyson School of Innovation, Phase Two, along Hilton Roads, approximately three... Yeah, yeah. Along Hilton Road, approximately 350 feet south of East Robinson. There's also a waiver, 18-15. Waiver for street improvements to improve Hilton Roads to only the southern driveway connection and not all the way to the southern property line, presented by ESI.
Good evening, my name's Blake Murray with ESI. Doing School of Innovation Phase Two, it's an extension of the Phase One plans. Planning on enclosing the courtyard area with a new building, new phase of construction for this. It's going to have a large parking lot associated with it on the south side of the property. And then a looped road that connects from Hilton back up to the existing Phase One parking lot. Uh, in addition to this, we're going to do some pond modifications to the existing pond to make sure it meets all the applicable city codes. Minor regressing and utility extensions to serve the property. And be happy to discuss any questions y'all have. We have the, a building rendering right here of what it's going to look like. Very similar in nature to the existing phase.
Staff comments?
All comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans, standard stormwater drainage questions, or comments, stormwater pollution, you know, those kind of things. You're asking for a waiver to only improve Hilton from the southern driveway to only the southern driveway connection and not all the way to the southern property line. How much will be left? And when would we anticipate that it could be improved, the remainder? Is there another phase that would pick this up? It's athletic facilities and stuff, are we looking at the next phase?
I'm Brad Schilkow with WD&amp;D Architects. As you know, in the district, they're not sure what the, the plans are for athletic fields at this school at this time. So the plan is just to leave it as is.
So it would be improvement only to that southern driveway with the other to be done, when and if something is done with that property, too?
Yes, ma'am.
And what about streetlights? Are there streetlights out there? Are they shown on the plan?
We're, we're showing one street light at that southern driveway connection, and then we have parking lots, very similar to the Phase One lights throughout the development.
And I just wanted to say, in keeping with the tradition of Dr. Bradshaw, when he says he was here, you get to be last on the agenda because that's what we expect, right?
Appreciate it.
Or to the end of the agenda, anyway.
Anything else? All right. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
This has a waiver.
Request for Hilton. Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Second by Mr. Covert.
This is the waiver, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Waiver passes seven zero. Large scale?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mr. Powell, second by Mrs. Haney. I'm sorry.
I'm David Gulliver. I live on Hilton Road, just kitty corner from this place. And a couple of things, I, I, you talked about some additional parking lots, but even with the school being right now, there's not enough to get people off the road. And every day that people are going to pick up their kids, they have to park out on the road, which makes it a lot more not so safe for kids that are out there and about. And, and, and I want to make sure that there's enough to, that with the new side parking lot and everything, to get people off the road and make it safer for the people that are there. And, and, and I don't know that, we heard anything about the water collection of, of the runoff water, because there is a drainage that goes through there and there, and it creates a flooding area, which is, goes through my property not far from where I live. And I want to make sure that, that the, the drainage is not going to be greater because of that. And the new, uh, school that's across the street from that, which is, uh, what is it, junior high school? They, they put a, a pump, not a pump in there, but a pot in there, but something to hold the water, but it really doesn't hold the water very much, and a lot more water comes off. I think with the first part of this, this Tyson School, they did a good job with the, with the, with the pump, with the pool there to, to hold the water. But I know that this is going to be beyond that. And so then I want to make sure that that gets done and get, gets done right. Because I don't want to see flooding to, to increase on me or anybody else down, down, downstream. And the, the last thing that you talked about there with the, the street improvement not happening, you know there is a park right down there on the corner of Don Tyson and, and Hilton Road. And this school is on the same side of the road. And I was just thinking that if there was a sidewalk from the school to the park and kids could get to the park and not be on the street, that would make it a safer place to be. And, in fact, I suggested that when they first put in the, the other school, is that they put, if there's a subdivision there and a, and a school, they ought to have a sidewalk. And, and, and they, that did happen. And that makes it a lot safer now, because there are a lot of times that the runners from the school get out and they come down the sidewalk, and they do that regularly. So I'm glad that happened. But anyway, that's pretty much all I had to add. And, and I just want, whatever happens, I just want it to be good and I want it to be safe and protect the, the subdivision, the people around that live there and the people that go to school there. And so that's what I've got to say.
All right. Thank you so much. So on, on the large scale, we had a motion as far as by Mr. Powell and a second by Mrs. Haney.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Large scale passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, L-18-16, Harbor Fire Station Number Seven, south side of Harbor Avenue, just east of Tuscany subdivision, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason Apple with ESI. This was an approved large scale with the 2012 bomb program. Just coming back to you as a revision or an update for this large scale at this time. I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, yeah, we're at the fire station.
We're at the fire station?
Yes.
We, we approved this already. I don't think there's any changes. Nothing's done any different than it was before. It was approved in 2014, and so we have no additional comments.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Second by Mr. Covert.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Uh, passes, large scale passes seven zero.
Thank you.
No, no overhangs or anything on this one, right?
No, not in setback, anyway.
Okay. Just checking. Next item, B-18-18, Mathias Shopping Centers, Lot Two. I'm going to pronounce this wrong on here. Conestoga Park. Variance for modification of commercial design standards as far as landscaping, presented by Craft and Toll. Can we read the second one on here as well? And then we also have B-18-22, Mathias Properties, Lot Two, Conestoga Park. Variance for modification of commercial design standards through alternate means of materials and articulation, presented by Craft and Toll.
I'm Bradley Bridges with Craft and Toll, here to represent Nick Pierce with Neil Snart Texture. Be happy to answer any questions you guys have tonight.
Staff comments?
Okay, let's start with the commercial design standards. You're asking for a variance not to do foundation landscaping.
Correct. We, we are providing some on the east side where possible.
Okay.
But mainly for the front of the buildings while we're requesting that.
And the reason being?
The sidewalk is directly against the building there.
Sidewalk can't be moved out to provide a foundation landscaping along there?
Not with the, to get the street frontage landscaping and also the parking that's needed.
Partly because of the configuration of the lot. It has a kind of a odd shape.
Kind of a pie shape, the building, or the lot.
And then entryway landscaping, you're not doing any landscaping along the entryway into the building, correct?
That's correct.
And internal parking landscaping, how many parking spaces are you providing?
21, better make sure that's correct.
And there's no island to...
21 spaces. There is one small island on the west end of the parking there. We do have, and there's, if you count the one small island there as you turn in, we've got about 3% of the required, 8%. That's why we're requesting the variance.
And then you're asking for more than 60% of the parking lot in front of the building, how much parking, are you putting all the parking in front of the building, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And landscaped areas along 50% of the internal pedestrian walkways and future bus stop locations, you don't have any of those, correct?
Correct.
And then the others to, the modification to the design standards, you're proposing an alternate building material, you want to explain that to us? Do you have a sample with you or a picture of it?
We had submitted a PDF that kind of showed a couple of projects that we had used it on. I don't know if that was an image that was available to pull up. I think it had been submitted.
Aaron, do you have those images where we can see what that building looked like? The ones that they submitted to show the type of, have you got some there that we can?
I do have just one. But it is, it's a, it's an accent panel that we've used previously. It's a high-quality metal panel, higher gauge, better paint coating, 30-year warranty on it. It's a pretty attractive product.
Did you see the product that was being, been around a while ago? On the previous project, is it similar product to that? Did you see that?
I didn't see that one, no.
I think it is.
I saw it, I think it is.
I think it's really close to the same product.
Okay.
The buildings that you're showing here, where are those located?
Uh, one's in Rogers Hudson Road. We did a series of warehouses up there that we used it as an accent material, especially on the front building. It turned out really nice, in my personal opinion. And then obviously, it's been used across the country on various large-scale projects. It's got a pretty good track record. Every time we've used it, we've had really good luck with it and have had plenty of compliments on the appearance of the building.
I think that's it.
We did modify the north elevation to provide more accentuation on that, to dress up that facade, wrap the canopy around that corner. I didn't have to see that on the second elevation down from the top, just to break up that facade that's facing north on Wagonville Road.
And the one that faces to the west that's on the ramp as you come off the ramp, too?
We extended that around.
If you remember, that was a blank wall before, and so they made those choices. They, they've really worked at increasing the look of this building. We'll have a few minor things that need to be addressed.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission. I, I do applaud you guys as far as going back and doing that. We appreciate that, so. This will be a call for the vote for B-18-18. Call for vote by Mr. Covert.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Passes seven zero and call for the vote for B-18-22.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker, oh, you're not here. Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Thank you. Let's see, we're down to waivers. W-18-10, Robert and Brandy McClellan, 6873 East Downham Road, waiver sidewalk requirement, presented by Robert of Brandy McClellan.
Robert McClellan, 6873 East Downham, requesting sidewalk variance. And I've paid my, which, that's all rural area, and I've already talked to, I've paid my bond. Aaron can contest to that, actually. And I already have a OC or a CO, and so... I don't know, there's no sidewalks anywhere from there all the way to Elm Springs.
Okay.
112.
And you, you need to point out, didn't we just give a variance to the property right next to you?
I'm sorry, what?
The property right next to you, to the, to the west, we just gave a variance because it's a very narrow piece.
And then the one just around the corner. But he hadn't paid the bond, actually. But I paid the bond because I wasn't aware that I had to do all that, and so then I ended up being forced to pay the bond, my own fault.
Because you wanted to get into your house.
Huh?
To get your C of value, you had to have that to get in.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any staff comments?
Well, I don't recommend waivers of sidewalks, but we just did the one next door.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote.
This would be recommendation.
I'm sorry?
This is a recommendation to council.
I'm sorry, recommendation to council.
Recommendation to council by Mr. Covert, second by Mrs. Haney.
Compton?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Uh, passes seven zero. Thank you, sir.
Staff will prepare the resolution, it goes to council on the twenty-second.
Okay.
So you can't get your money back until after council approves it on the twenty-second.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, W eighteen dash eleven, Parkway Plaza Subdivision, south of Don Tyson Parkway, east of fifty-six, west of I forty-nine, waiver. This got tabled?
That's nineteen twelve? Or nineteen eleven?
Nineteen eleven. Says waiver sidewalk require-
That is still here.
Yeah.
Sorry, I tried to get you home early.
Yeah, waiver sidewalk requirements presented by ESI.
So it's, it's also, um, a, a right-of-way width waiver as well, I believe. So when we presented the, the preliminary plat back in the fall, we had a section for the piece that runs north and south, um, that connects to Don Tyson. We had a forty-foot right-of-way, we're building a thirty-foot wide road and a forty-foot right-of-way with sidewalk on the east side. That was presented and approved at that time. And then when we came through, uh, we were trying to start construction, getting approval of construction plans, it was noted that the roadway did not meet the ordinance for the sidewalk and the right-of-way width at that time. So we're back asking now to, uh, request that waiver, as shown on the proof of the mayor plat, and then, um, also to be noted that when that, when the property adjacent to us does develop, that, that will be required at that time. So we, we set the road in there so that we had enough room on the east property, um, to have a buildable lot in there. If we shifted that back over that other ten feet, I mean, it puts a, it puts a burden, and that's, that's why we, um, had it shown that way, that's why it was approved that way, and we're just asking to kind of clean it all up and ask for that waiver this time.
Staff comment?
With the understanding that that piece of property wants access to that street, they have to dedicate the right-of-way, build a sidewalk on that side, otherwise there's no access to that street. Is that what we're talking about?
On the west side?
West side.
Yes.
If they choose not to have access to it, and they want their access off of Don Tyson Parkway, then there would be no dedication of right-of-way, we have a, a width of a street built in a non-standard right-of-way without a sidewalk on the west side. That's what it comes down to.
Just a side note that the developer of the Parkway Plaza Subdivision does have that piece under contract.
It has closed?
It has not closed, but it's under contract.
They do have it under contract, so, you know, we may can clear all this up, depending on how that happened. The property owner was not cooperative enough to us, allow us to put the street on the property line, how we would have normally put it, where it would be split on both pieces of property. So the property, the street was all shifted to the property on the east side to get the road itself in, the sidewalk on the east side, and not to overburden that piece of property and still have a, enough space to build, a buildable lot on that side, without adding that additional ten feet.
Any other comments? Any comments or questions on the audience? To the commission?
This would be a motion to recommend to council, let this be done.
Motion to recommend to council.
Motion by Mr. Covert?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell?
Covert?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Waiver passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution go to council on the twenty-second.
Uh, planning director report?
Just so you know, the, the city council overturned the denial of the, uh, cell tower at the Harps property. It will go back to council next Tuesday evening with a resolution to approve the conditional use. They still have to come back for the variance on the landscaping requirement.
Was there any conversation about the logic or rationale to overturn?
Well, there was a lot of discussion about, about that, and, um, I would suggest you just go to the website and look at the the video of that, uh, you know, there is a similar tower down the street, in the same kind of area, it is behind the building. Those were some of the things that was being discussed. The fact that Harps is the owner of the property and brought it forward, I, I think was part of the discussion. They didn't feel like it was detrimental to their property, uh, but it, you can go back and listen to all that. There is, there's some confusion, I think, about the landscaping requirement and the, uh, the tower itself, and so that was some of the discussion as well. When we set the work session for April, no, March, when we had all of the visitors come in, we talked about the May meeting, which would be the twenty, I have it down the twenty-second, that can't be right then, it has to be the sixteenth. Right?
Yeah.
That we would invite, uh, people to address economic development factors that, that affect development in the region. Those on the list included Perry Webb, uh, Nelson Peacock from the, the Northwest Arc State Council, someone from the, uh, resident, or the Home Builders Association, some others to discuss some of those issues. Are we still inclined to want to do that on the sixteenth and start at three-thirty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen, okay. Fifteen, I'm, I'm not good at dates today, that's for sure. Do we want to do it that night and, and set it up from three-thirty to seven-thirty on the fifteenth, or do you want to do a regular session in May and move that to the June meeting? That's, that's your-
I think if you don't get it done now, it's gonna be hard to get it-
We're getting into time, it gets tougher, yeah.
I'd recommend we keep it.
Is that okay with everybody? Okay? We had some discussion at the last work session about creating some subcommittees of the planning commission so we could do some more intense work, because we have so many items that needs to be discussed. And I have written down on, on my list of things that I think we need subcommittees for would be to review and to finalize the design standards for residential development. And I think it needs to include not only single-family but duplexes and triplexes, because the multi-family standard picks up with fourplexes. So we expand that and do those. Uh, we also have a group that, that continues to look at the multi-family design standards to see how applicable and if there are any changes that are needed there. The commercial design standards as well, because we're getting a lot of variances, and it always makes me question, do we have something that we need to talk about when we have so many variance requests for some of that? And there are some new materials out, as we just talked about, we saw tonight. We probably need to address our materials that's being allowed in commercial design standards, so we don't have that kind of waiver. And then we need to continue with the work on the Northwest Quadrant. Whether that's the group as a whole, or we create a subcommittee of that, so I'm just throwing that out for discussion. If you want to recommend that we set up these committees, you want to volunteer, send me an email which ones you want to, to serve on, and we'll kind of try to get this put together and start moving some of this forward a little faster.
Yeah, if we could just, uh, add that, probably the first part of the fifteenth.
Okay.
And then we can have recommendations out, coming out of that.
Be thinking about which group you want to, to meet on, I, Aaron and I talked about, we got plenty of things to do, we really don't need a lot more commit, committee meetings, but by the same token, we've got lots of things that need to be addressed, because there's a lot going on in Springdale, and issues that we need to take care of. So if y'all be thinking about that, if you think of other things that we, we could combine some of this together, maybe that works better, but those were the topics that I had down on my list of things that, that I think we really need to put some effort into looking at, and some of those issues came up tonight.
Does it make sense for us to consider having any of the city council members be part of these subcommittees? And I know they're very busy, I'm not looking to add more time to their wheel, but a lot of times, like, the, the cell tower is the reason I asked the question, we go through all the debates, and we make a decision, and if it's overturned, it is, it's their right, I don't have any problem with that. But I wonder if they would have any more insight to it if they were part of the process, had a seat at the table as these discussions are taking place versus just the, the planning commission approved it, do you want to approve it or deny it? And then they're put in a position of, you know, I didn't have any conversation with the planning commission, I wasn't part of that conversation. I don't know.
I've kind of tossed that around a couple of times, thinking about it. I, I guess my, the way I'm leading right now is the first round of subcommittees be just the planning commission so that we identify the topics that we want to bring to their attention, and then invite them to come in. Instead of trying, and maybe that's the wrong approach, I was just trying to narrow it down a little bit.
But then they, they at least had the offer to be there.
Because we're gonna have to invite the press, anyway, so that's not an issue as far as that's concerned, but we could do it that way. And I think we need to think about some people that are not just planning commission members or council members. We need other department heads who have to deal with these issues. There may be people in the community, stakeholders that need to be brought to these tables and, and talk about these things, too. It's easy to write things on a piece of paper. It's hard to put them into, to regulations that really work, and then do they work out in the real world? And I think we need to be careful that we're not just writing regulations for the sake of regulations, because in my opinion, that doesn't do any good either. So let's, let's kind of develop this a little bit more. I don't know that we'll get a lot done during the summer, it's a terrible time to get people together, but we might could vet out some of these issues and at least know what we want to move forward with when we get further into the fall, because it's gonna be summer here in a few days.
It is. Anything else?
If y'all have ideas or, or even, you guys, department heads and all that stuff, if you've got ideas, let me know, to make sure we start addressing some of these issues. It's a good time to be in Springdale, there's a lot of things going on. It's a challenging time, it really is for all of us, it's very challenging to keep these things moving forward, so.
I think with the city council, sometimes it might be better if someone one-on-one sat down with each member or talked to them on the phone, once, once we get this plan, because trying to get them all in one place is very-
True.
Absolutely.
So that gives us some, some leeway to be able to bring some of those things forward, so. Okay? I don't have anything else, then. Thanks, guys.
Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.